Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Paulsboro City Council meeting for November 12th, 2025. Paulsboro was committed to being a welcoming, diverse, and equitable community where all people can access tools and opportunities to improve their quality of life, allowing them to reach their full potential. During its meetings, the Paulsboro City Council will use this lens to inclusively view its discussions and actions. And Mr. Eckert, would you read the land acknowledgement phrase?
Yes, sure. So, excuse me, sorry. Paulsboro is located on the ancestral lands of the indigenous Kwamish people, for whom this place was known as Takaklots, or the land of the Mayan peoples. And then we have a quote from Chief Seattle. "Every part of this soil is sacred in the estimation of my people. Every hillside, every valley, every plain and grove has been hallowed by some sad or happy event and days long vanished." Again, that was Chief Seattle, 1854.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Now would you stand as you're able to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing on the agenda is to review and approve the agenda, and as far as I know, the agenda is as stands, so I'd entertain a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Britt?
Good evening. The doll, I, hi.
Noel, I.
Stern, I.
Eckert, I.
McVeigh, I.
Mr. Taylor?
Taylor, hi.
Thank you. Now we're on to public comment. If you have comment for the council, please step to the podium. You have three minutes and state your name for the record.
Is this all? Oh, it is. Hi, my name's Shannon. Used to reside here in Paulsboro, now I'm in Bremerton. I wanted to take this opportunity to come up because I wanted to say congratulations to Mary Lex Stern on his achievement, and then Councilmember McVeigh, and the new council member back there as well.
Michael.
But I also wanted to say, Mayor Erickson, I have known you for over 10 years, and I want to tell you thank you. I've been here numerous times, and you have listened, and we've had many conversations. You are someone who has taken Paulsboro in the right direction. You've done numerous positive things, and I also know you from, oh my goodness, PSRC as well, and what you've done there. You are a special leader. I have looked and studied you, and there's some things that I do take away from your leadership and what you've done. You have set Paulsboro up for success. You're turning them over to the right hands. But I definitely want to say thank you, because you are someone who really inspires and someone who is not afraid to speak their mind and to stand firm on what they believe in their truths. But you're also the first person to come out, and then that helping hand, and to be there for support, and to admit when we need to come together and address that problem head-on. I respect you. I admire you, and your work will be looked at, and your legacy will live on forever in this Paulsboro history. So, from the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you, and Danielle would say the same thing if she was here, which she may be later on, not today, but at another one. But I definitely wanted to make sure that I was able to take this time just to say thank you. I appreciate you and what you've done. Thank you.
Got to turn my mic on. You're gonna make me cry. Don't do that. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Becky, City Council, City Administrator Rob, and all the city staff. My name is Michael Fitzpatrick, and I'm at the podium simply to express my gratitude to our beautiful town for trusting me to join the council in the new year. The voters have clearly spoken, and I want to say directly to all the residents of Paulsboro, if you voted for me, I am grateful for your vote and honored to serve you. And if you didn't vote for me, I am no less grateful to be your neighbor, and I am honored to serve you. I look forward to getting to know more people through our collaborations together. I also want to say my gratitude, I express my gratitude to Kevin Sheen, the other candidate for seat five. Kevin was an outstanding candidate and is a deeply valued member of our business and cultural community here, and I so appreciate him for participating in this race with such integrity and big-hearted love for our town. I also want to thank the members of City Council and Mayor Becky for your encouragement to run for office and your congratulations after the election. In the coming weeks and months, I will be reaching out to each of you to meet one-on-one to learn more about your experience on council and your vision for our town, hopefully starting with Mayor Becky next week. I look forward to being a collaborative member with each of you in the coming year. And again, my gratitude to all our residents for participating in this year's election. If I don't already know you, please connect with me in the new year. It's really important for me to be a neighbor serving neighbors. Thank you.
Public comment.
Good evening, Mayor, newly elected Mayor-elect Stern, council members. My name is Pam Keely, and I live in Lyons Park. And I'm here with some remarks tonight about something I've been in communication with all of our officials, and that is, well, I have to use the F-word, Flock. The Flock cameras that the city is not using with their newly-launched traffic safety cameras, three of them in the city. So, there's been some discussion back and forth about the city's system. The city has clarified that they are contracted with Vera Mobility. Vera Mobility contracts, subcontractes cameras through Flock and through their own website information that seems to be the primary system that they use. The Chief Harding has responded that the city law enforcement does not use the Flock cameras, but it's unclear what brand is used. And the reason that this is concerning is because within the last several weeks, data and information have come out regarding Washington State and the use of law enforcement cameras and systems in the Trump administration immigration enforcement activities. So, we know that Flock cameras are used at the Home Depot locally in Paulsboro, that there are at least four cameras up there. And we don't know how they are being used. We know that the city has, of course, no control over commercial private systems. However, it might introduce a risk factor to the city that we'd like to have on the city's radar. We'd also like to know what brand of cameras and what system the city is using, if it's not using Flock cameras. There was a report from the Olympia Police Department dealing with this issue. They are going to have on December the 2nd a public briefing about their system and their equipment. We would like to ask that the Paulsboro Police Department make regular audits of their network data. We have seen in news reports that even like in Muckelteo alone, there have been over 1,000 unauthorized accesses to data used by federal officials in their crackdowns. We'd also like to ask to disable the national lookup feature on your system, if you have that, an amendment to prohibit data disclosure.
Can you wrap it up, please?
I'm wrapping it up. An amendment to prohibit data disclosure without written consent from the city or a valid legal order, and we'd also like to ask the city of Paulsboro to declare itself a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Public comments. Okay, seeing and hearing none, we are going to move on to Mayor's report and council comments. Ms. Libdal, how are you this evening?
I'm well, thank you. I do not have any comments at this time.
Mr. Newell?
Okay.
Mr. Stern?
No comment.
Yeah, so first I'll start by congratulating Shannon on his election to school board in Bremerton. So, he stepped forward, put his name on the ballot, which not a lot of folks do. Takes a lot of courage and dedication, so congratulations, Shannon. So first I want to say thank you to everyone who participated and came out to the Veterans Day Parade on Tuesday. It was a lovely day, another lovely event. I am happy to see as that tradition grows, how well it's embraced and participated in, and it's just getting, it's lovely. Unfortunately, with the shutdown still in place, there were a lot of active-duty elements that couldn't participate, which was a shame, but still a great day and a great event. So, thank you to the organizers for that. Thank you to all the people that sponsored it, and let's just bring it back even stronger next year. And then I'll just, as far as from Ms. Keely's comments, you know, the police department did put out a statement in addition to the responses, and the cameras that we deployed are not automated license plate readers, which is what the cameras that are being referred to as Flock cameras are, so we don't have those cameras. So it's not a matter of whether or not the cameras we have or have the, are doing what the concern is. They're simply not that kind of camera. So, that functionality's not there. Automated, as I understand them, automated license plate cameras are an interactive thing. They scan the camera, they talk, take those results, and they talk real time and share data with law enforcement. You know, a car passed by here, now that car, that license plate, that person's got a warrant. It's an active thing. Our cameras take video, and that take a picture of an event, car goes through a light, car goes by too fast. That's then reviewed at a later time. It's not a real-time thing. So, these aren't those kind of cameras. So, for folks that are worried about it, you don't have to be worried about it. Chief has already addressed it, and if you want to read the full statement, City of Paulsboro, our police department did put out a full detailed statement on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Mr. McVeigh?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Shannon, for coming down tonight. Thank you for your comments about Mayor Erickson. The end is creeping up here in terms of her retirement. We look forward to celebrating that with her. I also enjoyed yesterday's Veterans Day Parade. It was a great crowd, great weather. Thank you to all of the organizers, the Paulsboro Veterans Day Parade Committee. Lots of people involved, lots of volunteers, and it was a really wonderful event and keeps growing stronger every year. And then just to follow up to Mr. Eckert's comments, he had the police department statement on traffic cameras, data privacy, personal protections is on the Paulsboro Police Department Facebook page, if anyone viewing this meeting would like to read it. Thank you.
Mr. Tabor, how are you this evening?
I'm Mayor, hi, Council. I am fighting a cold today, so I'm here remote from home, so I don't infect anyone. And I just want to give a shout-out to Deb, our Budget Director, and Rob, City Manager, for working really closely with myself, Doug Newell, and Ed on answering some questions around budget stuff that we're going to go over tonight. That was, it's really, it's really nice to be able to work with the city on and to get so much progress done before, between meetings, so I just want to thank everyone for that.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Thank you. And give my best to Danielle, okay? I wish you'd move back. Come back, okay? Come back, okay? Yeah, it's true. You're in the school board. You gotta, you gotta stay there and finish your term. Okay, all right. I don't have any other comments other than I want to thank everybody involved with the Veterans Day Parade. They did a really magnificent job. It was very well organized, and it was just, it was just a really feel-good event. I want to thank Councilmember Newell for joining me in the parade. It was kind of spontaneous, but thank you for doing that. And Ms. Paulsboro, and we all walked together, and Mr. Eckert was in front of us with the colors. So, we are, city was deeply kind of, we were there in the parade, but the most important thing was honoring some very important people in our community, and that is our veterans. You know, I hear the, I hear the music from Keyport every morning and every night. It's that close. And we are a military community, and proudly so. And so, to all the veterans out there, I hope you had a good day, and God was shining down on us too. It was beautiful weather, so. Great parade. And that's all the comments I have this evening. With that, we're going to move to Board Commissions and outside agency reports. Any, Mr. Stern, you have something?
We overlooked reporting on the ad hoc committee of the City of Bainbridge Island City Council and the Paulsboro City Council, took place Friday, October 17th. It was on Bainbridge City Hall where we met. The city was represented by City Administrator Rob Gelder, Doug Tabor, Britt Libdal, and myself. I think just quickly, we went over the Raze Grant. There's a concern by the City of Bainbridge Island, and it's true of all the cities that are, that awarded federal money to improve trail and multimodal access linking Winslow with all the way out to Port Angeles and Nia Bay. There's a great concern about obligating those monies that the federal government might not follow through. And so, it's a go-slow approach. Public Works Director Diane Linius has a lot of experience and will be safeguarding that, but it's definitely put a pause on the projects for all the entities. Then we also discussed the bike ride that Councilwoman Libdal talked about last week, where we pedaled from Paulsboro to Winslow to try to promote multimodal. And then I think the only other one that's important, they brought up the question of short-term rental on the island. There's 150 units identified, and it definitely has an impact on affordable housing rental when properties are tied up for short-term rental and then sit there empty. So, there's that capacity question. That's it.
Any other Board and Commission reports this evening? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we're going to move on to the City Administrator and Department head comments. Rob, how's it going?
It's going well, Madam Mayor, thank you, and council members. Just wanted to piggyback on Councilmember Tabor's comments related to the ad hoc committee for looking at the budget. The call last week was to have folks get in touch with staff, and it ended up being a really collaborative process to be able to coalesce around the various ideas that I think you'll be pleased at seeing the spreadsheet later as we go through that exercise. So, thanks to Debbie and to Larissa for making that happen, and that there's a spreadsheet for everything, and they know how to manipulate them, and I appreciate that. Secondly, I also sent out an email as we, several months ago, we talked about sort of the fact that one of the services the city provides is the passport service, and I just wanted to call your attention to that. That did go out by email. But we, because we split that work between the Clerk's Office and the Mutual Courts Office, we came up with a composite rate, hourly rate that's fully loaded with benefits. We provide that service 51 working Tuesdays a year, on an average about seven hours per day. Then also on top of that, we fielded a lot of phone calls and emails that go into that. So, when you pull that together, it costs about $27,394, give or take, to provide that services in $20, $25. And we receive on average about $24,000, a little over $24,000 for those. And so, our subsidy, which I originally thought was much more grand just from walking around the office and hearing the number of calls that are done, was somewhere in that $3,000 range. So, I just wanted to make sure that I circled back and provided you that input. Also, it was great to be a participant as one on the reviewing stand for the Veterans Day Parade tomorrow, but just as you know, next year, because we go one day forward, that Veterans Day in 2026 will actually impact one of our council meetings that night, so we will have to take that into consideration. Also, it's not too early to worry about the city action days scheduled for January 21st and 22nd, and that 21st is also a scheduled council day. So, we'll just want to be making sure that we're aware of those as we plan for the weeks ahead. And next, we'd like to share a brief video. If you have not seen this one, this is compliments of the Kitsap Sun. There was cute music to it, but.
If you want a cheaper time to go racing at K1s, then make sure you come in every Tuesday for.
Thank you, Brooks. From one ad into the next, but it was actually kind of an interesting, it popped up on my feed, and I thought it was great that they took the opportunity from the print article that they had covered the parking in Paulsboro and then took the opportunity to create into a small video that, knowing that our audiences absorb information in different ways, so it was really kind of interesting to see that. But I'll take this opportunity to let council know that we've been fielding a fair amount of calls and emails from individuals who have concerns about parking, especially when it's related to events. So, Laz, our consultant, along with the PD, have been trying to help to demystify the whole process of reparking, because we know per code that you cannot repark in the same zone that you've been in for at least that 24-hour period. That can be a challenge, and I just want to put out to council that we are looking at other options, potential options, to address event parking in downtown. So, we're exploring with Laz some of the other capabilities that they have potentially for some type of permit or paid event parking, so that people can have the assurance that they are there for six, eight, 10 hours and not worrying about getting a $60 ticket when they return to their vehicles. So, we'll keep you posted about that. Our first event that's probably going to be of a fair amount of draw will be the Yule Fest on December 6th. And so, we are trying to fast-track this, and we'll keep you definitely posted about what options we're able to come up with. The other component too that's materialized that you don't necessarily think about, all the various scenarios, is when businesses and/or even the city have contractors coming down to do service on our buildings. We had an HVAC contractor come to City Hall who needed to be here for an extended period of time. We need to be able to have solutions for those individuals that are coming to service the buildings and businesses downtown as well. So, bear in mind, we'll try to come up with a system that's fairly consistent, but we'll keep you posted, and that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight, as Rob just said, $60 parking ticket, because I noticed it was in the video too, and it was in their print article. They keep saying up to, you know, a fine up to $250, but it's not been clear, I think, to a lot of folks that that is a very specific set of circumstances that you can get a fine of $250 for. The standard parking ticket is $60. If you park in handicap, employee parking, a bus stop, loadings that, like something that's designated something special, that's where the $250 comes in. So, if you just go over, you're in an hour spot and you go two, hour and a half, that's not $250. So, just, that seems to be a point of contention and misunderstanding, and I'm not sure if it's just because of that wording in the article. It's been that way twice now, but just know, yeah, it's not, you go five minutes over, you're getting $250. That's not the way it's written.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Rob, one quick question. Thanks for doing the analysis on the passport cost to the city. And I'm glad to know that it's closer to $3,000 in terms of what we're subsidizing. And I think we spoke about this once before. Am I remembering correctly that we are charging passport customers the most we can by state law? We're already kind of maximizing the user fees on that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, just a little reminder about the parking situation is that all the lots were already labeled with parking limits. We just weren't enforcing them, okay? There's always been limits on parking downtown. It's just that we weren't having an active enforcement policy. So, you know, I don't know if that helps, but you know, I know it's very contentious, and I appreciate everybody's patience as we wind our way through. So, anything else, Mr. Gelder? Okay, who's up next?
Good evening, Councilor Mayor. Just want to let you know of the progress. We have met with our financial advisors, the bond underwriters, and a couple of our internal team members getting ready to go out for a debt issue. We are in the process right now of gathering information to put out our POS position statement, and the plan is to gather all this. We'll be going for a bond rating, I believe, in January, and then in February, we will be receiving the proceeds. So, we'll be keeping you posted throughout the process, but we are kicking it off and moving along.
Thanks, Deb. I see Chief Harding's, is that him? Deb, is that the entire report? Yeah, okay. I see Chief Harding has his hand up. Go ahead, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Greetings, Council. I just wanted to give a couple of real brief updates. First of all, I want to acknowledge the work that Lieutenant Sean Zeeman did to organize the safety for the Veterans Day Parade. He did the entire ops plan, and the men and women of the Paulsboro Police Department, that most of them were working on their day off, but they didn't mind doing that for honoring veterans. So, I wanted to acknowledge it took an enormous amount of work to put that all together, and he's very good at that kind of work. And I also wanted to say that on Friday, this coming Friday at 8:00 a.m., Heather Wright and myself will be in council chambers to meet with anyone that wants to ask questions or talk about the parking program. So, we will have the doors open, we'll have some hot coffee, and we can just sit and chat about whatever folks would like to talk about. And then last, I just want to emphasize again some of the things we learned about our traffic enforcement cameras. We were able to reach out to both Flock Safety and Vera Mobility, and they both independently, in writing, confirmed that Vera does not use Flock cameras. Flock Safety and Vera Mobility do not share information with each other. Vera is not sharing information with any federal agency, and the Paulsboro Police Department as well is not sharing any of the data from our traffic program with any federal agency. Just wanted to reassure folks, but there's a more complete and exhaustive statement that we've published on our Facebook. That's everything I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, who's next? Don't all speak at once. Okay, okay.
Okay, I do have some updates, but I have to get on that computer, because there are cute photos from two things. Because there are cute photos from two things. One, the Spooktacular Halloween event, just two or three photos, and then how daffodil planting went. Well, unfortunately, it doesn't look like it's saving correctly. So we'll just go straight through a couple of Parks and Recreation updates. Be just a moment here. Perfect. So staff had the pleasure to attend the Washington Festivals at Event Association Conference two weeks ago. I'm very pleased to report the city of Paulsboro is far ahead of our peers. But we did take some great things away about special events, cost recovery, permitting, and how to make our process easier for applicants and great connections. You will be seeing more of those updates come to council next week and then likely in the coming months. But it was fantastic conference that we came away with quite a bit of good information. Our team also was able to attend Washington Recreation Parks Association's Fall Training last week. We sent four team members. And what was really incredible at that training was just what other agencies are going through right now, how they're implementing their capital projects. Really good suggestions there as well as how to increase accessibility and inclusiveness. And how do we how the city of Redmond has a phenomenal senior center, and we were able to meet with them and bring home some really good ideas for just doing some small updates to our community rec center for our senior programs. Which leads me to a pretty fantastic update. We are hitting averaging, we used to average about thirty to forty seniors in our fitness classes. We're hitting sixty. This is a good, yes, yes, Councilman Tabor, exactly. But but with this now, now our challenge is where we we run out of space. So we're working on finding solutions to really help our senior community, and it's just great to see that. We're also thrilled to have our second edition of the Senior Connections Newsletter with two new community partners. Paulsboro Historical Society, we're thrilled to partner with them, as well as Pickleball Kingdom. And collaborating with all our partners about the opportunities for seniors in our larger community. It's really generating some positive waves, and we're really thrilled with this at the moment. The other area is, boy, I wish this thing would update. Hang on, let me hit, let me hit refresh. You really would like to see this. Darn, okay, well. No photos, I apologize. I was hoping it would work. We also had our daffodil day on Saturday. So thank you to Valley Nursery. They donated over two thousand daffodil bulbs. They've been doing this for thirteen years. And thank you, Mayor Erickson, for leading this way. We are, we just distributed another two hundred fifty to Nelson Park, and so we'll get some planted over there. And then we also had our pollinator work party, the Paulsville Pollinator Program, that's P three. And we had Pearson Elementary students, Rotarians, and a number of community volunteers planting American Legion, including completely redoing and replanting the Veterans Plaza over there. And it's going to look good. It's going to look very good. You have to think five years down the road when things grow in and we keep adding more plants. And then the final piece of news, and Mayor, you might have shared this earlier, we have a new piece of property. One point eight acres. It's the Wash, it's the Little Wash Dot property is now officially city owned. The larger thirteen point seven acres is still sitting at this as an Attorney General's office, so we're waiting for that to trans over. But we have a small little piece of property officially done.
And this is what Jeff is referring to is what I call the three oh five Greenway, which is a series of parcels that we're gathering together that are environmentally encumbered. But some have some very large trees that are still, you know, it's beautiful property and it's right on three oh five and it will be a park and it will be green in perpetuity. And so we've been negotiating with Wash Dot for how long, Jeff? A long time.
Longer than I've been here, yeah.
What happened is when three oh five was widened from two lanes to four lanes, there was a deal struck with the city of Paulsboro, city of Paulsboro and the Washington State Department of Transportation. And they needed two additional acres for remediation of widening the road. And then so we gave them two acres of Klingel Park with the understanding that after the environmental review and a timeline had expired, we would get all of the land back. And so we're now in the process of firming up those deals. So talk about the pollinators, Jeff.
I'll be fast because I know we have a long meeting. So this is the first series. We had different ages and different families come out. These stickers that remember when Pearson came, the kids and they proposed these stickers, they're selling, they're selling dozens and dozens of stickers that those funds go back to the associated student body to sustain this program and ideally move into different schools. If you hear the energy, it's because the kids are the are the champions of this and they are there doing the work and they're excited. We also have partners with the Paulsboro Rotary Club, including also Lions and a number of other partners. And you can see everybody came out to plant. This is right at American Legion Park. Now, what's cuter than everybody in this photo is I need to have a better, this is this is Spooktacular and there's only two or three photos I'll share. This is.
And when's the next pollinator event?
The next pollinator planting is this Saturday. So if you would like to volunteer, we're going to be planting this corner down by City Hall. And thank you, Public Works, for taking out some of the non-native species and prepping the site. And and it'll look pretty spectacular when it grows in. And we have a second party, but this Saturday, if you would like to plant nine AM City Hall. Spooktacular, we had over four hundred kids and families come. This is for pre for little littles because there's not too much for them to do going to downtown. And and they they have an earlier bedtime. We had a pretty fantastic turnout, lots of laughter and joy. And our team did a phenomenal job putting this together. We're a little short-staffed right now, and we have a new team member who rose to the challenge and just did a phenomenal job working with our community partners. And a big shout out to Ms. West Sound and Ms. Washington and a number of others who came down too. That that is all my photos for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Makes you feel good. This is, these are feel-good things. Diane, anything from you tonight? Okay. Mike, Josh, Charlie, April, Lee? Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
On behalf of Mike, I am just going to say that heads up the HDPA in cooperation with Public Works will be Christmas-ifying holiday decorating downtown. So if you're driving through this coming Sunday, the sixteenth, earlyish in the mornings, seven, eight AM, please be patient. They're going to have a boom truck, flaggers. We only have one boom truck, so it's going to take a little extra time. So but it'll look sparkly afterwards. But that's all.
Tis the season is coming very quickly, Mr. Ecker.
And and just thanks again to Public Works for your help with putting up and taking down the US flag banners down on our veterans for last month.
Yeah, you guys are getting good at those banners. Thanks, Mike. Okay, any other comments from staff? Okay, so seeing and hearing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the city council for reading and studying and are considered to be routine. This is items eight A through C. And I entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A through C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Miss Libdal.
Libdal A.
Noel I.
Sturtevant. Eckert. Aye.
Mr. Tate. Okay, McVay I. Go at Mr. Tabor.
Tabor I.
All right. Thank you, Council. Now we're on to the business agenda, and the first is a public hearing for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six mid biennium budget update. And this is Deb. Go ahead, Deb.
Good evening. There is no presentation reminding everybody that we do have an adopted biennium budget for twenty five and twenty six. And this budget process is looking at the possible amendments that we will be approving to go forward with the mid biennium amendment. So this is a chance for the public to speak if they would like to speak to the budget before the council reviews the additional requests tonight.
Okay, this is a public hearing regarding the budget. There has no, there's no one that has signed up. But if you do have comment about the budget, please step to the podium and you have five minutes. We're opening up the public hearing at five thirty nine. Public hearing regarding the budget. I know it's a lively topic, okay, but any any comments about the budget? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at, call it five forty. Okay. Any other presentation, Deb?
Nope, we will see you during the workshop.
Okay, thank you very much. Item nine B is the tree board appointment, and this is Rhiannon.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The mayor has appointed the following board member and six council currents tonight for the tree board. Sharon Bynum will be appointment for a vacated position with the term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty six. And also as a note, the city is still looking for one additional vacant position on the tree board.
Okay, is Sharon here tonight? Sharon, would you like to say a few words, though? Come on.
I'm a retired teacher, so it feels like a school board meeting thing. I'm a transplant. I'm on the tree board. Isn't this like perfect?
Perfect.
Get that? I was trying to figure out, like, can I be clever about this? Anyway, I'm very excited to be able to volunteer for this committee because my main reason for even volunteering was I am a transplant. I moved from the place that nobody wants to talk about, Southern California. And but I've only wanted to live here since nineteen seventy four. I retired from teaching a year ago last June. And I was looking at the, I was at the library, which I go to every day and looking for opportunities to volunteer. And I thought, oh, my gosh, this will give me a chance to really understand not just the tree board, but the city itself and the workings being a part of that. So why I'm not a tree expert, prior to being a teacher, I was a marketing manager for McDonald's Corporation and responsible for thirty three corporate stores in Western Washington. Our office was in Kirkland at the time, and then I became a teacher. So what I'm hoping to bring is connections with the community through marketing and elementary schools or elementary schools and other schools within the district. So hopefully that'll that'll help expand the involvement and everything. That's it.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Okay, okay, so I would entertain a motion to confirm Sharon to tree board.
Madam Mayor. Move to confirm the mayor's appointment to the tree board as presented. And thank you for stepping up, Sharon.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions, conversations? Miss Libdal.
Libdal A.
Noel I.
Sturtevant. Eckert A. McVay I.
Mr. Tabor. All right. Thank you very much. Welcome aboard, Sharon. Okay, so now we're moving on to the West Paulsboro Stormwater Retrofit Project acceptance. And this is Charlie.
Good evening, Council. A very brief presentation. So as part of all of our capital projects and we complete them, we bring them forward for acceptance as complete, and that's what is before us tonight. So just a little bit about this project, this is an ecology funded stormwater improvement project. It was located over in Nelson Park. And if you went over there earlier this summer, you kind of saw a portion of the park torn up. And then if you go over there now, it's been reconstructed and revegetated and looks quite a bit better than it did previously, which is really cool. So as I mentioned, this was all funded with ecology grants. We opened bids back in March and we hired a local, the low bidder was Vet Industrial, who's a local contractor out of Brumerton. Their bid is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Was constructed this summer. And it's treats a fair amount of Finn Hill and Viking Avenue, which is kind of cool because that area didn't have any stormwater treatment and it's right at the head of the bay. So has a pretty big impact on the water quality in the bay. It was a overall, it was a really successful project. We were ahead of schedule and under budget, nothing too complicated. Kind of the biggest challenge was the size of the site. So we kept the trail that's in Nelson Park that connects to Fish Park open during construction, which is a big piece of kind of keeping the park going. And so there's just a couple of aerial shots. You can see that's a fair amount of equipment in a pretty small area for the contractor to work in, and they hauled out maybe five, ten thousand cubic yards of material. So quite a bit of work, but they hit it hard and they got it done. Overall, our the total project budget was one point two five million with eighty five percent funded by ecology, so just over a million dollars and the city shared just under two hundred thousand. At the end of the project, it ended up costing us about eight hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, so well under budget. Had really good bids. We kept things pretty lean. Had about seven thousand dollars in change orders, which was cool. And yeah, overall, just a successful project that went really well and has a big impact on the stormwater. So entertain any questions and be looking for project acceptance.
Questions for for Charlie regarding the stormwater retrofit. It's beautiful, Charlie. I mean, it looks gorgeous. Yeah, it's really, really attractive. Any questions?
I just said, well done and good job of coming in under budget yet again.
Hopefully in the future, we'll see a lot more recreational stormwater partnerships. Yes, that's one of my big dreams as I look at all those stormwater ponds up at Olhava. I think, why can't we make these into parks? So.
I'd be happy to make a motion. Go ahead. Move to accept the West Paulsboro Stormwater Retrofit Project as complete.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing and hearing none. Miss Libdal.
Libdal A.
Noel I.
Sturtevant. Eckert A. McVay I.
Mr. Tabor. All right. Thank you very much. Well done, Charlie. Okay, and that is the end of our business agenda. It is five forty six. Do we want to break or do we want to go right into the workshop? Pardon me? Ten, ten minutes? Okay, so five fifty six? Okay, ten minutes.
Let's keep it a little bit better.
All right, where did they put us today?
Okay, guys, we need to start to bring the meeting back to order here, please. And we are now moving into our workshop agenda. And the first thing on the workshop agenda is the special events in December 2025. And this is Jeff. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, community members. We have two events coming up in December, so it'll be fairly quick, and they are beloved events. The first event is the Polesbo Fire Neighborhood Santa Tour. So that's where the fire trucks go around. I tried to become Santa, but there's actually a lot of obligations, and I'm losing hair. Okay, I did say I'd be brief. So that's going to be happening around all throughout the neighborhoods. It starts on Friday, December 5th, and runs all the way through the 21st of December. So take a look for that. The second special event, yes, sir.
And they collect for Fishline as they go. So if you, as they go around, folks, if you have things to donate, they will take it as they come by.
Thank you. That is very true. They do stop and collect for Fishline. And Fishline is certainly in need in today's environment, along with other food banks. The second event is the Viking Yule Fest Bonfire. So this is on Saturday, December 6th. It starts at 11:00 a.m. and it tears down at 10:00 p.m. But this one, you may recall, this is where the Vikings dress up, they have the torches, and they go up waterfront boardwalk in a procession. And that procession is tentatively scheduled to start at 4:18 p.m., which is sunset, which is a little crazy. That's 4:18 p.m. And then they'll terminate over in Waterfront Park, light the bonfire, and celebrate. And those are our two events for December.
Okay, questions for Jeff? There's a lot more events than that in December, but those are the two city events, right?
Those are the two permanent events for December.
Two permanent events. All right. Questions for Jeff? Any? Okay. Okay, so next is LTAC, which is Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Funding Recommendations, and this is Jeff.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hit this button. There we go. All right. Be fairly succinct. Good evening. So tonight, we have the 2026 Grant Funding Recommendations for the, from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for the Polesbo Tourism Grant. Just briefly, here is the current committee. So we have a new chair, Councilmember McVeigh. Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Stern, Mary-Luk Stern, for all your work on this earlier. And we're supported by city staff, and we have several folks who are on the committee. We do have a current opening. We had one member resign during, in the middle of the process. We just wanted to make sure, and that was Stefan, Stefan Evans resigned in the middle of this. So we do have one opening that is advertised if you know anybody who is a business that collects lodging tax and would like to submit an application. The grant process starts a year early. We publish this online. We are ahead of other jurisdictions. We want to make sure we're transparent about the timeline. We estimate, staff estimates the funding in early June. The committee meets three times in person, the first to review and update the waiting criteria. That happens in June. Then applications are live for quite some time. This year, we did something a little differently and elected to do a Q and A with applicants. There were 15 applicants, a record amount. And as opposed to having presentations, committee members submitted questions. Staff proposed those to applicants. They received those. And then there was eight minutes for those applicants to speak with the committee about any outstanding questions regarding their application. And then finally deliberations last quite some time, and that happens in October. I will say that there is, there was over $1 million in requests for funding this year that broke a record to my knowledge, and there was $369,000 in forecasted funding. Briefly, the grant process, waiting for tourism marketing, marketing of operations, things that are in the off-season, and proven overnight stays. The committee is very set. I'm ensuring that there is data. So if applicants can provide the data, that's a powerful tool. The other considerations, City of Polesbo can apply for certain grants following the RCWs. Applicants are meant to become more self-sufficient over time, and that less than 25% ideally be used towards operations. Now, these are just guidelines, but they are considerations. Ideally, most of the funding stays in Polesbo, about 75%. And the two new ones for this season, this cycle, is parking. How are applicants going to address transportation or parking if they propose something downtown? Or if they don't propose something downtown, say you're moving that event, and that's a solution to solving it, so spreading it out. And the other component is getting, again, getting away from the downtown corridor. And then the other component for Council to be aware of is last year, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee made a very strategic decision. They said, we have reserves, and we want to make sure that some of those reserves are set aside for larger upcoming projects and larger initiatives and opportunities, so they keep the powder dry, if you will. This retains a lot of advantages. The committee for this year agreed with that. Nothing changed. So this year's funding recommendations are based not dipping into reserves. They're based on what the forecasted revenue is going to be, and that keeps the reserves healthy for these future strategic decisions. There are about four slides here, and I'll briefly go through them. You could, and they are organized, you'll see the applicants on the far left in the, where it says one, two, and three, that'll tell about the different projects that each of the applicants proposed. So they're anywhere from one project to multiple, where their focus was, where their original request was, and where the committee's recommendations are. I will also say, one of the topics that was brought up that we heard from the committee was moving away from the peanut butter theory of trying to spread everything very thin, everybody gets something, and being more deliberate with where limited funds would go. And each and every single committee member did say how challenging it was with very limited amount of funding to try to meet a million dollars in requests. Not everybody could be that funded. So we'll go through these slides. And you'll see that organizations did receive funding, but they received funding specific to the projects. So if there is no funding associated with the project, they, they can't fund that project through these, these tax dollars, if you will. Finally, you'll see how the total requests there are at the bottom of a million and what the recommended funding level is, which is what the estimated revenue is going to be. With that said, that concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
So Jeff, you're familiar, the previous two years, we did some seed grants where they did not have, applicants didn't have quantitative numbers on what they expected for heads and beds, out-of-town visitors. So we provided seed funding, so they, you could assist them, possibly the new data collection devices, but to come back. Did any of those that we seed funded at the minimum come back? And how well did that work out as an exercise among the group? Kind of an impressionistic answer, what I'm looking for.
And I'll look to my colleagues in the finance department as well on this. But my recollection on seed funding for applicants that received some amount of funding and came back, the data was either very limited or it wasn't impactful. And I'll speak to, and I don't want to call out any specific organizations, but one of the organizations was only able to demonstrate there was one overnight stay. And it's difficult for, what we heard from the committee, it was difficult for them to fund, fund that organization when there's only one overnight stay, when they could take that money and have a larger impact for one of these other organizations, specific to a project that they're requesting. So we did not see too much from that seed funding. Now, that's the limited 1,000, maybe $2,000 seed funding that I believe you're alluding to. The only example, other example would be Liberty Bay Books. Did, their, their event is coming back, and they are moving offsite, too, and they did receive quite a number of folks who attended the first year, but their, their event is still, oh, boy, I wonder if it already happened. It's in November, so it was after this. Is it coming up? Okay. So not all the data is in as well. Councilmember Stern.
Okay, questions for Jeff? Okay. Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, just as the chair of the committee this year, a couple of comments. We had, for the first time this year, we had two regional tourism groups apply for grant funding. We've traditionally had requests and supported some of the initiatives from Visit Kitsap. There's another regional tourist group, tourism group that has formed called Love Kitsap, and just wanted to note that for you. They, they submitted several different project ideas totaling about $121,000. And we did fund one of their initiatives, which was possible media content creation, which is essentially doing some videography and, and other marketing work that could be shared across other organizations, which was pretty appealing to us. But so Jeff mentioned a million in requests, 369,000 to give away, but you know, we did have a lot of different projects to wait through this year because we're getting some new and different applicants, which is a good thing. I, I did what I could with that organization to caution them, you know, asking for, funding for seven different projects, your first time out is, is asking, I think, quite a bit. So, and we, during our Q and A, I asked them if they wanted to sort of specifically highlight one or two they thought were the most important, and they kind of threw it back to us. They wanted us to decide that, so we did. So there, the work of the committee, I thought, was very collaborative. We've got some very experienced committee members. They're in it for the right reasons. I know there's going to be some disappointed people with that many requests and that level of funding. To Jeff's point, yes, we made the To Jeff's point, yes, we made the conscious decision not to dip into reserves because we want to save some of those resources for the launching of the Perk Project, which we want to make sure is successful. But overall, I think it was a good process this year, probably make a few changes next year. And as Jeff said, we are looking for one new, another committee member representing also the lodging or the short-term rental industries.
Who is Love Kitsap? Who is, who, who are they? What is it? Who is it?
Mayor, you heard from them as I did at Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council two meetings ago, when Commissioner Walters brought that group together to address this on the FIFA opportunity, and they went on and on.
Yeah, okay.
That's Love Kitsap.
I always nervous when somebody's asking for almost forty thousand dollars for visitor maps when we all have these. So, I mean, it's like, huh? Okay, just my editorial comment, that's all. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, and just, so you said about anticipated funds, so the three sixty nine, there are sixty nine, that's the anticipated funds for the coming year, and we just tried to keep it, we tried to keep it right at the estimated amount for the year, is that what you were saying?
Yes, and I'll look to our finance department as well, but we're estimating three hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars for this upcoming year. Is that correct?
Correct, that's what's in the budget right now, and that's what we budgeted for the expenditure as well.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Jeff? This will be coming back on the consent agenda. Are we all okay with that? Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you all.
Okay, so now we're moving on to South Fork Dogfish Creek Project Grant Acceptance, and this is Charlie.
Well, so this is some good news that I'm happy to share with you guys. We, this last fall, we applied for, sorry, applied for another Ecology Stormwater Grant for the South Fork Dogfish Creek Project. This is for construction funds. The design was grant-funded through Ecology as well. And we were successful in getting about a one point five million dollar grant from Ecology, which is cool to do this project, so. This is focused, kind of right around Centennial Park is where the bulk of the work will occur. It's, there's a lot of different pieces to make it all work with how the stormwater system is, but we're only doing about a half of the overall improvement that we did design for. And the, the idea behind that is we're making the biggest improvement that we can for the smallest facility footprint at the kind of least expensive cost, but still having an impact. So it ended up being about fourteen acres of basin in the in this portion of South Fork Dogfish Creek, which doesn't have any treatment. It's commercial, this picks up some of the trailer park, picks up our Public Works yard. So it'll have a pretty good impact, and most of the improvements are adjacent to the roadway or kind of on the edge of Centennial Park here. So one of the things here is this pretty deep ditch will be reconfigured into a buyer retention swale.
That'd be great.
So kind of, right now, it's a strict conveyance ditch, and it'll actually have some treatment function after this project. And kind of our timeline, we will update our plans beginning of the year. Kind of target a late spring advertisement date, summertime construction with completion, probably all this time next year. As I mentioned, we got about one point five four million from Ecology, or the overall project cost is about one point five million. Our share is about two hundred and thirty thousand of that, so fifteen percent of the overall project cost. And yeah, we're going to clean up some of these swales with this project and put some big buyer attention in and make an impact. And so we're looking for, to place this on the consent agenda to allow us to sign the grant agreement with Ecology. I'd entertain any questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Charlie, this is not going to touch upstream by the Public Works facility yet?
No.
That needs a lot of work, too. What, what do you see looking forward in a possible timeframe?
As far as stream restoration work, we're currently working on the Eighth Avenue Culvert. And as we've been doing that, we've had a couple of meetings with Fish and Wildlife out there and the Tribe. And I think that that, I anticipate that the scope of that Eighth Avenue Culvert is going to get a little bit bigger with the upstream and downstream reaches, because as we are working through that project and kind of looking at some of the technical data in the culvert design, there's been some potential items of concern identified on the reaches upstream and downstream. And so when we go to get our permits, it's likely that we'll end up with, you know, we're going to plan for some requirements to do some restoration work. Limits of that, T P D, you know, obviously we don't want to make something huge that we're going to fix the whole, the whole reach, but we need to do enough to not cause a problem when we do a culvert, so.
Mr. Eckert.
Since you're looking in this particular area, any chance of letting the, the ones there next to the library across from Public Works at some point in this process?
Sorry, say that again.
So the, the one that's kind of across from Public Works and next to the library?
The, the pond there.
Yeah, any chance of letting that anywhere in this process?
Well, so we included that, the pond retrofit is phase two of this project, and it's the other half that I didn't mention. And the problem is that's a pretty big improvement that Ecology is not going to fund because it's a water quality flooding issue or a detention flooding issue and not a water quality issue, which is the only thing they're really funding. And so we were pretty strategic in our funding request. That being said, I do think that that, there are some, I mean, we came up with a solution for that pond. I don't think it's the best solution. But it's a pretty expensive project to do anything there, and we'd be touching up the sides of some landscaping and making it a little bit deeper. I think a vault type solution and putting something on top of it is probably more realistic, or, you know, be it'd be expensive if the city wanted to commit money to that, but I mean, that'd be a solution, but I don't see it as an investment that we need to do at this point, so.
The problem with that particular one is that it, it's not, it's the water quality when you have all the, we have all the ducks in it, and guess what ducks do in the pond? And guess what happens when we have rain events after the ducks do what they do in the pond? And so, you know, I think vaulting would be a good idea, but you know, that's what, two million bucks?
Yeah, I think I'd have to look back at the estimate, but I think it was two, two and a half. So very expensive for a little bit of benefit.
Yeah, we could, you know, we could put a vault in and turn it into a basketball court, you know, it'd be, it'd be great. But we, that's a couple extra million bucks that we just don't have at this point, so. Questions for Charlie? Any questions? Consent agenda with this one too, as well? Okay.
Cool, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next is the solid waste collection contract procurement support consultant, support consultant. Okay, Diane.
Good evening, Council. So I put together a couple of slides just to help with discussing the, the contract that you have in front of you. So what we had in the packet is a, a contract with a procurement consultant for the solid waste collection contract. So just, I just wanted to remind citizens mostly and maybe, maybe some council that we completed a financial evaluation of the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund earlier this year. And that work was performed by Financial Consultant Services Group. The results provided three scenarios for rate adjustments to sustain the enterprise fund. The cost of services for solid waste have been rapidly rising over the last several years. And those scenarios included zero rate increase, which did not work. They also included a one-time twenty five percent rate increase. And that was option two, and option three was eleven and a half percent per year over three years plus C P I. After a discussion with council, it was determined that now is the time to look at outsourcing solid waste in order to provide the most cost-effective service to our citizens. And a resolution was authorized by the City Council for Public Works to begin the process of outsourcing solid waste services for the City of Palzbo residents and bring back some, excuse me, some, some options for City Council consideration. That resolution was issued on September tenth, twenty twenty five. And I, I want to say that this is the first step in that process, is hiring someone who's very specialized in the business of solid waste and in the business of contracting with solid waste providers. Especially since we're going from an in-house service to an external resource for services. So we put out a solicitation, and there were two consultants that submitted. The services that we anticipate they will provide, the selected consultant would be assisting with the preparation for implementing and finalizing a competitive procurement process for a new solid waste collection contract. This takes one year to happen. We received two proposals, they were both single singles, individuals that do this, this type of work, and that's what they focus on. They both came from government working for municipalities directly in a role that had contracts for solid waste services, and we, we thought highly of both of them. We, and when I say we, I'm talking about the engineering and public works team that evaluated the proposals and had interviews. We chose the company Been There Consulting as our top choice. I do want to let you know that I think the other individual might be a resource down the road for negotiations. And he was also open to doing that. The consultant of cost.
His name, Diane? What was his, we have Been There.
No, no, no. His name is Hans.
Been There and Hans.
And his, his, he's an sole proprietor, and he goes by his actual personal name. Been There has been around for about, can't believe I said that, about fifteen years. And it, she worked with another individual owner, and then she took over the business. Anyway. The other thing I wanted to say about Been There Consulting is she's also worked with our attorney on other projects, and we thought that was a plus. That was nice to know that she has worked with Emily and has successfully been through this process before. One thing that she put in her scope of work that I think is worth sharing with you is the overall schedule. It is a one-year process to get from where we are today at kickoff to a potential signed contract. Now, if they choose to use our equipment, or if they already have the equipment, we can go into services right away. If a equipment needs to be purchased, you know that solid waste truck is about an eighteen-month purchase process. So that is a big determinant in how quickly we move forward.
Is that something that we would find out early in the process? Or like, so kind of when in that timeline would we, would we know that now we add eighteen months?
I, I think we'll have a good idea on that probably six months into the process. The interesting thing about the process is we work with her to develop an R F P. We send that R F P out to the providers, potential providers. They evaluate it for fairness, you know, could they compete? Is there something in there that we put in that precludes a provider from bidding on it? They let us know that, we revise the R F P. Then we issue it, give them a couple months to put their total costs together. And then we go through selection, and the criteria for solid waste might be cost. It might also be ease of transition, and it might also be quality of service and reliability. Those are the types of things that we'd be looking at. We also, in December, January, we would do a short survey, a very simple short survey to our citizens just to verify what, what is important to them. And my understanding is that it typically reinforces cost and reliability, but there might also be some other things that we can find out from citizens. If we were to offer this, would you use it, and how much would you be willing to pay for it if it increased the cost of services? Those are the types of things that we would find out. So the total cost is forty five thousand dollars. That includes a survey, that includes developing the procurement, that includes meeting with staff and, and council presentations in the entire year of work, so. Goal for tonight is, is just to take any questions that you might have and then bring this to consent agenda if it meets with council's approval.
Questions regarding Been There? Go ahead. Go ahead, Gary.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Diane, very helpful. Can you just give us a sense of what, which sort of comparable cities that the firm has worked with in the past?
Yeah, oh my goodness, I'd have to go to her website. But it was the list of about twenty cities, and I know that Renton was included, Auburn was included, a city from Seattle, and then a couple of small cities, too.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Eckert.
Yeah, just, I mean, forty five thousand doesn't seem like a huge amount. But I know we talked about even, regardless of what we do, we're, even if we're going to, we agree to get divest, we'll have to do a rate increase some point in the, in the middle. Adding this cost into the utility, will that affect the rate increase that we'll have to do, or is it not substantial enough?
It, it would fit in with the rate increase. So the rate increase that we anticipate is eleven and a half percent, which was one of the options that was presented, and we would go ahead and do that in January. So I'll be bringing that forward in the next, I think at the next council meeting. And we need to do that in order to sustain enough revenue to support the expenses. But the one thing that I think is important to mention is if we end up with money in reserves and solid waste, it would roll into a benefit to the customer through other utilities or however that will be done. But if there's any reserves in the account, it would go back to the customers in that way.
Okay, but we won't need it, like you said, eleven, this isn't going to cause that to become twelve percent increase, or that it's still small enough?
Correct, it'll be eleven and a half percent plus C P I. We'll stick with that.
I see, Mr. Taber, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, there's, with the R F P, how much work needs to be done? There's only Waste Management providing solid waste removal in our county. There's no other, you know, company doing it besides Bainbridge and us, and then Waste Management, so. How, is there, is that really needed?
Bainbridge Disposal is also a provider that they do our recycling and our yard waste, and they also do garbage, traditional garbage on Bainbridge Island. When we went through this process before, they were interested and they submitted. Also, there are at least two or three other providers that provide Mason County, Pierce County, Gick Harbor. It's possible that they may be interested. They've always wanted to come further into Kitsap. It's possible that they may be interested.
It would be wonderful to have multiple bidders. It would be. Okay, any other questions about this contract? I think it's remarkably, it's, it seems not, like not very much money for a very large expensive decision, so I think that, I think it's a good idea to move forward. Are we okay, Council, on the, on the consent agenda? Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Diane. Okay, now we, we are going to move on to the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six presentation and discussion, three-column worksheet for Mayor's proposal mid-biennium budget, and this is Deb. One of the things I want to say before you guys start presenting is that when I was first elected to mayor, elected to mayor many years ago, I inherited a budget that was very challenging for me and very challenging. We were right in the middle of the city hall. We were looking at a million dollars additional debt service. The cash flow was falling like a stone and I came in and laid off thirteen and a half percent of the staff. So, um, uh, I have, I have backed away from this process. Okay. This is something the council needs to discuss with the city administrator. And so I have purposely not been involved in this process because I do not want anyone to think that somehow there was something I could have done or didn't do or should have done for the coming budget. So I've, I have, I have not been involved directly in this budget presentation. So just for the record, okay, because I'm going and Mr. Stern is coming, okay? So I'm, all right. You guys want to kick it off? Go ahead.
Absolutely. So tonight we have brought forward what we've referred to in the past as a three-column approach. And in your folders, we have included an updated spreadsheet and we're, we're going to walk through each one of the levels of those. What became nice is having conversations with some council members so that we can make this presentation easier to understand. So it was helpful for us to devise something to explain it as well as hopefully it's helping you in your decision-making. And so right now I have Larissa who is driving our spreadsheet for us. And if you look at, what happened? There we go. Okay. So if you look at the top blocks, you'll see there's both twenty-five and twenty-six. And what we do is the first one is starting with the beginning balance. It's looking at the operating revenues and also the operating expenses. Those have already been approved in your existing budget. So that is the existing budget through the adoption of the biennial budget as well as budget amendments that have come into play before this. And then down below that is if we were to look at the beginning balance plus those revenues less those expenditures, this would be the projected ending fund balance as of today. So we've actually going through the budget process, we've looked at some adjustments. And so the next block is looking at some of the revenue adjustments that are going to be pretty much determined by going through and evaluating our revenues through the year. So looking at the taxes as they've been trending, property taxes, we receive updated numbers from the county. So we have updated those and based on the levy that the council adopted. So we up those to what has been out there for the county for the property taxes. And then B and O taxes, we talked about, this is a brand new tax and we brought it up to still be conservative, but follow the trend of what we collection and also leaving a little of that conservatism based on knowing that the timing on some of these collected in the year are to the prior year. Development fees in twenty-five have been trending a little bit higher and we, so we bumped those up to reflect what the actual numbers were, where what we anticipated those to be. And then they're, they're staying flat for two thousand and twenty-six. Park and rec fees, Jeff does a very good job of looking at all of his programs and he really evaluates them for the year. And so the first question is why are we seeing a reduction in those revenues? So when he developed these and we're developing these in July, he at that point was thinking they were losing the music program. And so he changed those revenue projections to fall in line with that. In the next few months, those came back. So even though you're seeing a reduction in the revenues, down below you'll see a reduction in the expenditure. So it's a one for one bottom line, it shouldn't be too much of an impact. The good news is that revenue is coming in. They found another program. They're hoping this year we'll take care of that. Grants, as we've received those through the years, so we have criminal justice tax dollars that are some programs that we've had come in from there. And the biggest one is our HHH committee. You know, you have a very active director who's looking for grants and we've received some of those years. And it's really hard to predict because most of those grants are running for a July first through a June thirtieth, which is different than our fiscal year. And so that's why some of those numbers are adjusted mid-year. Uh, we, what I wanted to point out is there was a large grant in the general fund and it was for the RACE grants. And what's happened is that is federally funded and so we know that we're not going to be receiving those dollars in twenty-five. And so we've removed that budget from the twenty-five and we've also removed the related expenditures. And actually in twenty-six, we've moved those projections to the path and trails fund. So you'll see it differently. But again, if we don't get the revenue, we won't be spending the money. Excuse me. Traffic infractions, you've had a very active police department and so they've been doing some traffic enforcement and so those revenues are running a little higher than projected. And so we've increased those projections to reflect actual activity. Um, as we all don't know is the camera revenue, it's, it's, it's been much higher. We didn't know the timing that the cameras put in place. So we've increased that budget for twenty-five and we projected it increase slowly higher in twenty-six, still being conservative because the hope is the, is they're promoting safety and that's the reason for it. So the revenue may go down as, as drivers become a little bit safer out there driving. I'm sorry. Donations and opioid, this money we've increased, the opioids, they have settlements and we a lot of times don't know when they come in. We're with these class action lawsuits and as you know, we passed to join the last consortium. And so those are the actual revenues we received in twenty-five. They are restricted and so that's not an expenditures to offset it unless we've directly related an expenditure to that program. Um, we had a study going on for Eighth Avenue, so we were transferring from the street fund to fund that and we are not progressing that far in the project, so we're reducing that transfer. And then we put it back into the program for twenty-six. And then parking fees, as we talked about, is the plan was to start enforcing parking in the spring. And so we put the budget in or the projection in for twenty-six of what those, they anticipated a higher number. We figured if it were in place half a year, we'd change it to fifty percent. So that is the estimate coming from the consultant. And then the last one is what was reminded to me is when you pass these parking fees, the intent was to restrict those funds, any excess of what we're paying for those for downtown parking improvements. So the revenue coming in less the expenditures leaves about eighty-seven thousand dollars that we are putting into assigned fund balance to support future parking improvements downtown. Then if we go down to the next block, also you'll see the total revenue adjustments. And if you add those to our original revenue adjustments, you get to that one gray line, proposed operating revenues plus your adjustments. Coming down to the next block are expenditure adjustments. And so as you went, as we go through each one of these lines, as we get changes in contractual obligations. And the first question I had is you are actually seeing your wages and your benefits decrease in twenty-six. And the answer is yes. And that's because when we build this budget, two years ago, we estimate we have contractual obligations that say we will go up to a four percent CPI. And so we budget that high amount. The CPI came at two point seven, so we know that we're not going to be increasing our scales of four percent. We also had a reduction in the retirement rates, which was very helpful to the general fund. And so we had budgeted the old retirement rate at a higher number. So getting that to the actual number projected to collect in twenty-six brought that down. And we also had a little savings of the insurance projection, which we bring up to ten percent. I will lay the caveat that we're still waiting for a couple benefit rates to come in primarily labor and industries. And so that may adjust again a little bit, but it should be pretty close if we're, if our assumptions are correct. Um, and then when the city administrator came on board, we, we brought the wages and benefits in with him, but we didn't want him to spend any money for his operating expenses. So the clerk and the city administrator and I sat down and we reviewed the budgets and distributed between the mayor and the city administrator's budget, splitting it, basing it on a part-time mayor. And so the, the increase is, is a little bit, but that gets us to where we feel is very programmatic. Contractual obligations, again, we build those in. And so these are adjustments for the contractual obligations, little bit of decrease, I, I believe we'll see is we overestimate those increases projecting a ten percent and maybe some of them came in a little lower. The big one is your prosecutor actually came in lower than we projected, so that is a nice bonus for us. Park and rec, again, there's your operating expenses that are offset by the revenues. And then planning study, what happened is when we did our carryover amendment, we missed the amount for the LAS and they've already, I believe it was LAS or no, who was it?
Walker.
Walker, sorry. And so we're just covering it in this balance because we've already expended that money and missing it then. And then what we've, again, there's the expenses related to the RACE grants. So if you look at that first block and the second block and then there's totally your operating expenses, if you get to that next line, it shows your proposed operating budget and that includes your transfers and that is exclusive of your beginning balance. Now that first number in twenty-five is a little shocking when you're looking at that five million dollars, reminding you that there were transfer in there for two and a half million dollars to build our Nordic cottages until we go to debt. And it also includes eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar transfer for park acquisition. So about fifty percent of that projected transfer is for specific for land acquisitions and projects. Then we get down there and we have our adjusted ending fund balance. So now we get on to the next categories and the mayor and city administrator and myself and Larissa went through all of the recommendations and our city administrator worked with department heads and they prioritized a lot of those requests. And so what, what Rob had presented last week is what his recommendation were for those. So we have populated that column under the city administrator column. And so what, what was asked and which makes great sense is let's look at what are the one-time requests? Let's look at the personnel costs that are ongoing and the next page over is looking at your also ongoing costs because the presumption is when you're funding some of these ongoing costs, the assumption is you're going to move into the revenues to support those or you're knowingly going to use your reserves, hopefully building, building some savings later or the revenue project later. So the first, the first column is what we talked about is brand unification that was proposed to as our, our logos to get those standardized, to maybe bring everything standardized. So when you see something for the city of Paulsboro, you know it's the city of Paulsboro. And so that's a little bit of money set aside for that. Our building code update, this is mandatory. It has to be done every three years for us to stay compliant with our building requirements. The housing, human services, again, she is proposing to use restricted revenue, part of those opioid settlements as well as money that we create for substance abuse programs. So those are actually going to be using some of your assigned fund balances or restricted fund balances.
And above that is the vercutta.
Did I miss that one? Sorry. Thank you. This is why I have helpers. So the vercutta, this is a big one. Yeah, that is quite a big one to miss, isn't it? So this is IT. As you know, our IT department has been working very strong to make us compliant in the government sector as well as upgrading our Windows programs and increasing our security. And then we also are working to the goal of having all of our items on the cloud and not having servers in-house. And so this is a cumulative cost with all of those items taking into place and making us compliant in the government sector as well in having our software up to date. And if there's any questions to that, I have Brooks here to help me decide any of those. Then we, then we go to the housing, again, they're using their design. And then the parks and recreation, they've asked for an improvement for a structural improvement to do the racquetball court, which they talked about, it gives them more usable space in their facility. And then some safety improvements, that is your cameras, your security systems supporting that building. And the doors, oh, and the doors, the doors of the vercutta. Okay. Thank you. Um, and then as we know, we hired an emergency manager, but we did not allocate any money to set up the program. So these requests are to set up the program to have our EOC center over at Public Works. And so most of those costs are one-time costs to get that center set up and to get us active for emergency management. We have been working on the streets to get them all LED converted and looking at all of them, we had a few more streetlights and the costs were a little more than we anticipated. So we would need the thirty thousand dollars to complete that. Yes.
Um, that's what I was gonna ask. So with that, we will have the hundred percent on all existing streetlights?
I will, I will let Mr. Lund answer that.
We will be one hundred percent with all existing city-owned streetlights.
Okay.
The PSE ones, they're working on their own, but that's the last section I think is some stuff up on Lincoln that we need to do.
Okay. Do we have any idea from a, from a savings, from an operating standpoint, like if the, you know, the conversion, would it saving us for cost of operating the streetlights?
From, from a power standpoint, we're saving a little bit from an operational standpoint of us not having to go out there with, and change lights and, and do all that. It's a lot of time, effort and safety, so.
And it's hard to see the energy savings because as we save on the current lights, we also grow and put more lights in, right? So those are offsetting each other. So we're, we're never going to see a true savings, right? Um, okay, so then getting down to the boardwalk, this is when we talked about, we, we really need to move forward and I know there's different conversations on that, but we, in order to be over, to get the progress, going over with DNR and all of our legal guidance and timing, we really need about a half a million dollars to start design of that. And that's what they would like to do next year. And I think a huge part of that is getting our permits and our design and getting ready for the improvement. And they'd like to start that on twenty-six so we can stay safe and maintain the integrity of the boardwalk. So those are your one-time requests. Then moving on to the personnel requests, which we had talked about, engineering has a lot of projects going on. As you know, we've just talked about the perk and the Noah Road and the cottages and we just have had a growing number of projects as well of all the utility projects, which they also coordinate. So they need a project coordinator to help with some of that administration, but keeping in mind fifty percent of that will be charged back directly against the projects. Then the house and housing, human services, what the director would like to do is the director would like to have their remaining, right now that position is paid twenty-five percent out of those, um, the, the affordable housing dollars towards, yes, and towards substance abuse. And so she would like to move that back into the general fund and lead those funds towards, towards more affordable housing as well as if we increase or make some enhancements to the substance abuse program that are allowed uses. The parks and rec, the reclassification of the recreation manager is a little bit of that hierarchy establishing the manager who can work with your coordinators and set up all those programs. He did indicate by bringing this position in, his revenues would support that because he would have additional support to help support doing the programming and growing those programs. Then we have the senior adaptive recreation specialist. This is a half FTE. And then the recreation specialist is a half FTE. And again, felt that these revenues by increasing that and making that position a full, that half FTE, you would have cost recovery and the revenues, growing revenues would support that. The police department, uh, next, sorry, is the code enforcement. And what we did is the department and the, and the city administrator heard the message from the council and the mayor that this was a priority. And so we have put this under our recommendations based on the council's priority to make that position filled and start some code enforcement in the city. I know that we wanted a little more explanation that it's not just about the signs, it's about every part of code enforcement. It's your tree cutting, it's possibly your business license, it's everything, it's not just that. And so looking at what all that would encompass is the city administrator would work with the planning director and establish a program and come back to council and talk about where would you like your emphasis to be?
One of the things that's really important about this one is that if the signs are cluttered all over everywhere, but that's not the important thing. They're ugly. But the important thing is if we ignore our ability to enforce code, we also have a liability because we've chosen not to look at things, i.e. bumps and sidewalks, all kinds of various pieces of actual physical infrastructure that we're not necessarily catching because we don't have this position. All right? So this one, I think of all of the new positions, this is to me the most important one. We need to have somebody out there enforcing our code. You know, making sure bushes are cut back so we don't have right away visibility issues, those kinds of things. It's important. So my two cents.
So then going down to the police department, they have delayed asking for new positions, but they would like to do some reorganization in anticipating the growth of the city and create a little bit more hierarchy for the department in order to manage and to fill their shifts and the needs that's needed. So they would, they would vacate an officer's position, which was asked last week, and they would create the sixth sergeant position because that sergeant position would be moving up to a lieutenant's position. And then also reclassifying the service managers, the, the admin, professional services manager to the police admin director, helping some of that high-level work at the, at the management level. And then taking their current senior police admin specialist and moving them up to the support services manager. So it's a restructuring within the department, building a little bit more hierarchy, more supervision in anticipation of a growing police force so they're ready and set to go. Looking down at our utilities funds, there's an asset management position, just twenty-five percent of this, not just, but twenty-five percent of this will be funded from the general fund because we take those and spread those among all of the services. Because we take those and spread those among all of the services that they are covering. So seventy five percent of this will be covered by your utilities and, and spread out in that way. So those are all of your personnel questions or personnel changes. That would stay in place and be continuing, need to be continued supported with your consistent um, current revenue or growing revenues. And then when we go down to the other ongoing expenses, um, these are not personnel related, but they are contractual obligated. We left the.
Second, we have a question, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna add, um, I suspect the largest amount of conversation amongst this is going to be on this section. Um, personnel, do we want to stop and have that now or do you want to have Deb finish out and then we come back to this?
I think it would be helpful to finish the entirety of the.
Okay.
The layout because there is a logic behind it and then we can go back and drill in.
I, I figure we go through the whole thing and then come back line by line and see where the consensus is.
I'm just gonna ask the question now.
Nope, whatever works for you guys, I'm, I'm here, I'm here to support you. So looking at the other ongoing requests, um, we did not include the cost, um, the quest for the W W. It wasn't a recommendation by the council or by the, not by the council, by the staff and by the mayor. Um, that's a small business development is center. And the increase in key to dues is they are in the budget at a base of ten thousand dollars. And we had increased it in twenty five for a one year request of five thousand dollars, making it fifteen. They requested for that, that additional five to be put in place and so we put it through a new program because for you to evaluate.
The S B D C, can you clarify what you just said about that?
They are, they are not in the budget, they were in the budget in twenty five. And so they are not in there in twenty six and they've asked for the funding to be sustained in twenty six. And that, yeah. Um, then in the building department, they have um, a lot of on call inspections for commercial plan reviews and those costs are going up. And they're using a lot more professional service, or not a lot more, but they're using more professional services to help with the day to day review and use that expertise. And so they are requesting an additional budget of twenty thousand dollars moving forward. Central services, um, this is a, a big one and part of this is a one time request and part of this is ongoing. This is to get our website up to A D A compliance and refreshed our webpage. So about seventeen thousand dollars of it is ongoing and the, the difference between the thirty six and the seventeen thousand. Is a one time creation cost, so just breaking that out for you. Um, the H B A C R F P, we are getting older in our buildings. And we are needing more work and more um, in the cost of, of maintaining that H B A system. And so they need a digital fifteen thousand dollars to maintain the expenses to support those professional services that come in for that. The sendio hosted opt inbox pro, that's what they talked about is when you send out an email. And you say, is this a known user and you accept them or don't accept them? And so that was an I T request to kind of cut down some of that. Um, spam that we seem to all get in our emails and also verify that the people coming into the city are legitimately coming in for city government business.
What's nice about that, it actually puts the onus on the person sending the email, not the one receiving, so they have to.
And then um, the utility costs, unfortunately, I, I don't think we have a choice on this one, the cost of utilities is, is, is continue to grow up. Um, and so that, that is reflective to get an ongoing budget and increasing about five thousand each year to cover utility costs. And that's the, this electric for this building, that's the um, the water, the sewer, we pay ourselves for those services as well. So those unfortunately are, are, are going to have to be done some way or another, or could find the money a different way. Um, the project management software that the engineering talked about is a lot of what they're doing, um. They're busy and they um, need a program that's more professional and geared towards that project management. And so the request of that software is about a twenty thousand dollar a year subscription that they'd like to implement. Um, the park and rec has asked for summer nights at the bay concerts and what that, that does is that helps. Their recreation program and not go and look for um, donations. It also helps improve the music program and have more opportunities to bring in some of the talent that might really a little out of our budget. And then the wellness committee, we've had a very active wellness committee and it's nice to take advantage of that level of excitement. I think you saw the city's um, employee picnic as well as the Halloween and we're coming up with the appreciation luncheon. And that is done all through the wellness committee and they'd like to take some of that excitement and they'd like to go to the conference. And find out what other opportunities are out there. So they asked for this request to send two people to a conference each year that A W C hosts. Then in the planning department, um, they just had some small increases that they needed. That to felt to um, meet some of their bottom line budgets and so you'll see those are pretty easy. Cell phones, dues and subscriptions, travel budget for the training. And the police department, um, the cost of the car washes has increased substantially and they need that money. In order to um, continue getting their cars clean and representing the city with their clean vehicles. So as you see, these are the total of the ongoing costs that are not personnel related. And then down below that is we have our projected ending fund balance. One thing to note from the personal, first um, first issue that you saw, well, number one. Um, Excel is only as, as good as the formulas I put in there and there was a formula error, so we fixed that. And then next you'll see that I actually did add in the assigned fund balance for your parking fees. So you can see that eighty seven thousand dollars segregated that will continue build with those parking eyes. And then the net next page, um, though these, everything we've talked about is affecting general fund. And that is our main operating fund and remembering that, you know, seventy five percent of that is wages and benefits. And related to services that the city provides to our citizens. The next page are primarily related to your utility funds. And the one question I've had and Diane might be able to help and, and verify this is. If we bring in, if we approve these requests, do the, does the current fund or does the current rate structure support these expenses? And my thoughts is we've gone through all of these functional plans and continue to update the functional plans. I have, I believe that we have them built into the rates and can sustain those expenses. But I will let the expert give her um, confirmation.
Um, I'll speak to two pieces on it. The first piece is the things within our control. And the staff that we've requested and the adjustments are within the rate analysis that we did for the water sewer and, and storm utility. Um, we did anticipate some rate adjustments in water and storm, just to remind um, in future years. Um, the second thing is the things that are outside our control. Kitsap County's charges to the city of Paulsboro are outside our control. And you might notice an increase of a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. Um, from what we had previously, um, we did estimate a significant increase. Um, and I would say that any future increases related to Kitsap County are completely outside our control. So I'm not sure that I've fully anticipated everything that could happen there.
Thanks, Dan. And so, so now, um, now it comes up to council and what you would like to do. And I didn't know if you wanted to go through it um, line by line by the additional funding request. You wanted to um, group them together and, and go ahead, Mr. Stern.
Thank you, Debbie, very thorough. Um, let me start with health and human services. Uh, that's a very fast growing, robust, now providing critical services department. Mr. Gelder, where we call from his time as county commissioner, serving at Kitsap Transit. Paul, the uh, finance director, often referred to uh, over those years. Concern on the horizon called a fiscal cliff, where we projected out potential impacts that weren't currently realized. But we were anticipating but uncertain about. So uh, pertaining to health and human services, and I just made a couple notes. We're now conducting mental health, behavioral intervention, emergency assistance. We're proposing a court diversion programs that would be built then into our court administration catalog. We're doing housing therapeutic services, we're doing meals, we're doing sanitation. I'm wondering what the thought is since how much of that is grant funded, a huge amount, right? We're not bearing that on the general fund, yet unlike like a code enforcement program, we could stop and start. And easily pick up again, this is going to affect real people who become dependent. It could affect the courts, it could affect uh, our relationship with the fire department on their level of service, certainly the police department. So it's become embedded, if not critical, probably both. So I'm wondering, Debbie, what your thought is on sustainability, given the very large degree of dependence on grant funding? And at what point do we begin to think about if that's the case? Incorporating components of this or anticipating supporting this with the general fund or not?
So I can take a, a little bit of a stab if I may. There, I mean, there's, there's a whole bunch of different layers uh, in, in that question or in a, a potential response. I think part of what uh, Kim's request in terms of shifting the director's salary over was to. Have that, that small amount go from the affordable housing tax. Um, that frees up capacity within that fund, which in many ways is restricted. And to recall, though, of the, the split of, for the usage of that fund, council's already made a determination that forty percent of that goes towards. The, the whole uh, recovery center, that, that type of service in the community. Whereas the remainder of that is going towards affordable housing, because that's allowed under our C W.
Right.
What is, there is a lot of uh, grant funding, yes, that's true. Um, I think the other thing that we don't have all the answers to tonight. And will be part of the conversation as we come back to council retreat in January is that potential opportunity. Uh, for the twenty fifteen funds, uh, the public safety sales tax. Um, because, and the reason why I ask, say that is if there's. The ability to utilize those funds if, if council were to go in that direction. To be able to underwrite in, in basically say, okay, we can fund the recovery center and those programs through that. And be able to take that, what we've been investing from the affordable housing. And bring it back into affordable housing and redirect that in other ways. So there's a whole bunch of different layers and different ways that council can kind of approach that. Um, but right now, really looking at trying to shift uh, a remainder of our salary over. Looking at being able to utilize some existing revenues that are coming in. From whether those other restricted funds, whether it's opioid, et cetera, or the, the liquor tax. So that's really on the table for the, the um, H three programs at this point.
So uh, uh, Rob, you'll recall, we never got to a fiscal cliff, fortunately.
No, you never do because we are obligated to have balanced budgets.
Right.
And to, within reason, right? So that's, that's what we strive for.
So if I were to take a comprehensive planning lens, like we do, planning for public works and streets and the rest. To begin to look down the road at which time these are critical services that the city has basically created. And now depends on and look at capacity within the general fund to sustain these. Should grants be threatened or not? It's not happening this year, it's not happening next year. I would, my thought is, let's be thoughtful about this like we do with Kitsap Transit. That's highly dependent on outside revenue sources too, right?
True, and there will always be an evolutionary component.
Right.
To um, human services, because a program that is needed today. May not be needed tomorrow, we have the ability to be nimble and fluid to be able to respond to the emergent needs.
And then just two quick remarks, I'll turn it over to my colleagues. On the small business development center, I would certainly recommend ten thousand. We took that as a uh, commitment and partnership with Kitsap Bank and other kind of a public private partnership. It could be that we want to dissolve that relationship, but I wouldn't want to do it unilaterally without hearing from them. Uh, and being thoughtful about it and making sure that the level of service that's provided versus the. Revenue we're providing don't match up or not to our satisfaction. So I wouldn't want to just do it off the cuff. So I'm, I, one of seven would recommend the ten thousand for now and then do some homework. And then lastly, Debbie, help me with parking fees, you're showing um. Four hundred and fifty and then we show eighty seven thousand remaining after expenses. So the, we have three hundred and sixty three thousand in expenses. And those comprised of what? Consulting services, the contract?
That's, that's the contract for Laz.
Yeah, that's.
It's the parking enforcement, so the four hundred and fifty is based on the Walker study that said if you had paid parking annualized, you'd have about nine hundred thousand ish. So based on the fact that the, the direction had been to push off paid parking till like mid year and twenty six.
Right.
We said, okay, let's just split that uh, nine hundred thousand into four half.
Yep.
Right, so that's what would be plugged in there. Um, the eighty seven is the, basically the moving any additional revenues from parking. To be able to have those dedicated into the future. But first and foremost, we have to pay the Laz contract for the, the enforcement, which is a three sixty three.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Debbie.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, couple of comments and then a question or two. Um, so um, for, in terms of process. Um, I suspect we agree with a lot that's here, so I would suggest rather than going through line by line. We focus on where are areas of concern or disagreement, that's what I would suggest. Um, so, so um, a comment, um, I, I think. Uh, the fifteen thousand dollars for the logo brand alignment seems very low to me. Having worked in that business for many years, uh, I don't know if you got an estimate from a contractor, but. Fifteen thousand dollars doesn't sound like a lot of money for that kind of work. Um, uh, I would like to have a discussion about whether we actually um, replace the boardwalk. Um, rather than plugging in five hundred thousand dollars, I'm not sure what the five hundred thousand dollars is for. I guess maybe we're building up to the two million plus. Uh, I think we need to have a conversation about that, I, I'm not going to support that without further discussion. Um, and I would hope that the ten thousand dollars for uh, the summer nights at the bay. Were just front loading sponsorships so staff can go ahead and make some hiring decisions of entertainment. But that we would still be working towards collecting sponsorships to help repay those funds. I thought that was kind of the idea to provide some initial stability there.
Correct.
Okay, is that right? Okay, all right. Um, those are my comments and questions, thank you.
Okay, Rick and then Doug.
Would you like uh, any feedback on the, the boardwalk conversation?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
We've got both Diane and Josh.
I just wanted to offer a clarification on the boardwalk and um. The proposal that we have in there right now is for repair of the boardwalk. Um, it's not a complete replacement, it is, it is along the lines of a repair. And um, we don't have recent work from a designer to give us a really good cost estimate. The range of what it could cost is actually pretty wide. Um, I think we have a pretty conservative number in there. Um, the initial estimate for a repair was in the eight hundred thousand range. Um, that was several years ago, we didn't feel like permitting would allow us to do it that cheaply, the way permitting has changed. And so the number has been significantly increased. Um, but I also want to let you know that we haven't had that validated. Um, the best way to have it validated is to proceed with the design and the permitting process. And we will have much better numbers for the city. Um, the design um, and permitting is not as big of an investment as the entire number for the boardwalk. Um, that's in the capital program, so um, that was just some um, input for clarification.
Rick and then Doug.
And number, um, I, I, I would say honestly, I don't, I, I don't know enough about the boardwalk. I think we probably do need to talk about it just because I don't think it's come up significantly since. The majority of the council turned over, so I, that would be a useful conversation to have. But my actual questions, um, when we get into the personnel stuff, um. I'll just say one that's not on here and I kind of mentioned it last time and I'll just throw it out again. I am a little concerned about the sports and facilities coordinator, I know you said kind of the sort of weight. Uh, just because I, I have this gut feeling concern of we are investing so heavily in this facility. But then we're being conservative with, with the staffing that we end up waiting too long. And I know you mentioned last time about, you know, there's a lot of staffing that's going to be involved with that. I have absolute confidence if we hired a maintenance person too soon, Mike would find work for them. But this staff, you know, the, the person about programming is a unique role. And so I just, I'm just going to throw out it, I, I don't want that to end up, we wait too long, so just, that's a. Keep it in mind, I would much rather put it in the budget and not use it than not put it in the budget and then need it and have to react. So just, that's a general thought. Could the halftime senior and adaptive recreation specialist and the halftime recreation specialist be one person? Be a one F T E? Be a one F T E?
I, I would ask uh Jeff about that, uh specifically, um, given that recreation specialist position is already filled. It's just that they are filled as casual labor. Um, this has an opportunity to actually bring them uh into the overall organizational structure as a, a real, not a real, sorry, no offense to the, the person, as to an, to a, a a counted F T E versus a casual labor.
I'm just thinking, I know we've had conversation in the past and Doug had a lot of concerns. He's brought up about part-time people and benefits. And so, you know, I'm just kind of looking at if we got, if we're thinking of two part-time people in similar roles, does it make sense to have one full-time person and they get the benefits of being a full-time person?
I think it depends on skill set, but I
Yeah.
Jeff can.
Yeah, I think we'll have to enter, I'll have to get back to you on that. The, the original proposal is first, it's just a reclassification. Uh, with, there are eight thousand casual labor hours Parks and Rec has and, and when we look at organizational charts, council may not see that, that, the, all the hands that hold up the city services on the Parks and Rec side. And um, we have folks who are, have been with us for years. Uh, and as was Rob saying is um it's recognizing their ability to moving them into a regular part-time. They, they don't receive health benefits, but they're already budgeted for. It's just a title change for that. When it comes to the senior and adaptive specialist, that's, that is a specific skill set. Um, and if we did merge positions, let's say we took the existing recreation specialist and added enough duties um, to make a full-time, we'd have to figure out what the health benefits would be for that. And I, I wouldn't have that because health benefits add thirty, forty thousand.
Okay, it's a thought, as I just said, I just, when I see two, two, fifty, half.
I think it's a very valid question because we'll have long-term, if we have a full-time person, we're going to have a, a wider pool of talented candidates than someone who can only fill a twenty-hour a week position. Um, but we have not entertained that. I have to have some discussions with our city administrator and finance director.
Okay. Um, and then when we get into the, the police department, I understand what we're talking about. Um, I, I do, when we do have the retreat and we do start talking about the funding, the, the revenue streams and all that. Um, I think we do need to look at some of the current and then the potential new streams because I, I think that the workload certainly supports additional patrol. Um, I think that while we do want the camera revenue to eventually break even and not cause revenue, I, I, it doesn't seem to be going that way anytime soon. And so I would like to see and this leads into another question, but much like we have the neighborhood streets fund, I would like to divert that money into a, into a complete streets fund because it's allowable. And, you know, start building up funds to do some of these other projects because that's not funny, then we, money then we count on for ongoing uh, staff and all. So, you know, we can take that money and then enhance the police department as needed the other way. And then just um as far as the um small business in Kita, and you know, I supported them last time. I fully support them this time, but quite honestly, if we're going to reduce our B N O revenue, then to me, we got to reduce our business expenses as well. And if we're going to reduce B N O by thirty thousand, this is fifteen thousand that we can reduce expenses and balance with the staff time savings that, that for Deb's staff that might actually break even on what we're, on the revenue we're not bringing in. So I, I, I see this as a reasonable deduction based on what we're talking about doing to be in out. So.
Okay, so I have the list is next, next up is Doug Taber.
Okay, and I just one last, should we have streets as a projected fund at the end there? Uh, it's neighborhood streets because we do have to keep that money separate.
That isn't a special revenue fund because it is funded by a um, an R C W tax. And so it is sitting in a separate fund and all of those funds are allocated.
So the neighborhood street, okay, because I know we put, is that because it's T V D funds, not just.
Because it's a sales tax generated fund, which is a legal fund by R C Ws. The parking fund, um, the parking study we put in is not an R C W.
I know originally it was just council matics. I didn't know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So next up is Doug Taber.
Hey, Deb, um, thanks for all your work on this. Um, first question is, I want to confirm that the projected um total fund balance at the end of twenty twenty-six would be two point nine million, which is over our fund balance policy of twelve percent. Or two point two.
Two point, the two point nine million. Um, if you look at the fund balance policy, the twelve percent of operating revenues right now is a two point two million dollars. So we do exceed that fund balance. Cash management is a little bit under, but that is a cash flow projection that we monitor and stay above.
And if that were to dip or, or be lower than projected, we could always, I'm just thinking hypothetically now that we could always um like delay discretionary funds or stage um, you know, projects out further. Um, let's just be thinking aloud, sorry.
We, yeah, we, we will review um all of our revenues and expenditures quarterly and we can adjust at that time if need be.
Great. All right. Um, and then just for all the rest of the council, I was um, uh, the, the code enforcement, I was kind of on the fence about and I um became less on the fence about when I started looking into what other cities use it for. And then I realized that it's kind of has offsets in terms of it. It's uh, it's reducing liability and then it's charging fees and fines. So it's actually um, in some cases can pay for itself through that. Uh, and then the other thing is the boardwalk. I think we, yeah, we need to have a conversation about the boardwalk. I love the boardwalk. I walk on it at least once a week. Um, but i- if it's you know, comparing a boardwalk total cost of, you know, ownership for twenty years and comparing it to some other projects that we have going on. Um, is it what the city needs? And I hope the answer is yes, but I, I think it's something we need to seriously talk about. That's all.
Thanks, Doug. Okay, we have Britt and then we have Doug Noel. Where, Britt?
I'm ready. Um, my gloves are on and I am ready to die on the boardwalk hill. The little one, the little hills.
The rest of the council, the rest of the council hearing this? Okay, she's gonna.
I've gone on the record. The boardwalk is, to me, represents part of what I've termed the democratization of our waterfront. Like we um have more waterfront that's available for anybody to come and see and enjoy and walk along than a lot of other jurisdictions in this area, as much waterfront as we have here. We get to enjoy it and the boardwalk is a huge part of it. And I did not bring a baby into this world to not be able to have her enjoy that boardwalk where we live. Yeah, that's, that's, this is the future. And I, I mean, I care how much it costs, but it's a, it's a i- i- it's a maintain it or lose it situation. And I'm not prepared to be on this council and lose the boardwalk.
If it goes away, we will never get permitted to do it, to put it back. So, all right, you're up next, Doug.
No, it doesn't appreciate the rhythm and how you, how you've got this organized. It makes it easy for us to consume and make decisions on. So thank you for all the efforts and, and questions. Um, so I have, there is one person separating me from Britt. So uh when she brings out her glove and starts to swing, um, it the five hundred because of the question of what is that? It um, it might be warranted, Rob, for to go back to where Diane was, is that um, maybe we spend a little money on an engineering study to develop a couple of COAs. You know, what's maintenance costs look like? What's repair costs look like? So that, you know, you've heard at least four of us have voices of we just need some more. And, and so how to execute advice, it's five hundred because we don't know what the five hundred gets us at this standpoint.
Sure, I understand that. And I mean, I did back in the committee structure, I sat on the committee that, you know, considered the boardwalk and, and I, I mean, and one of the questions I've had, and I mean, it sounds like it brings it to maybe even more astronomically high, but again, this is all part of the fact finding. But are there ways that it could be done better that would take less of this expensive maintenance over time? I mean, I know replacing the creosote with steel is like a very long-term and expensive thing to do.
Yeah, come back with a number that makes sense so that we can make a good decision. I guess related to that, and Britt, you bring up an excellent point. We are blessed with a lot of waterfront and a lot of our waterfront is, is public in one way or the other. We have had conversations, not as a city, not since I'd been here, about what do we do going from Sixth Street South um, along the way and into where Kitsap County is. I think if we tee it up for a, a future discussion on how we do this, I think I'd be at least interested in that because a lot of people walk that way too. And we've had conversations.
We've always dreamed of a raised grant or a big funding source.
Yeah.
Yeah, in order to do.
It all, I think it all works together to your point, Britt.
And I think in part the, the five hundred thousand was just a recognition that there was the capacity within fund balance to say we have a lot of capital projects that need some infusion. And this was one of those.
Mr. Stern, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so uh, a lot of work went on behind the scenes this week on the ongoing operations costs and trying to match sustainable revenue to pay for labor specifically versus one-time sources that can get us into trouble because we hire someone and then we can't pay for them. They, they literally drop off the table, not so good. Uh, the same thing with the capital that we're talking about, whether it's the boardwalk or per phase two or you name it. We, we need to get into those retreats and match capacity with programs and priorities and only the council can decide that. But to do this one-off and just say this has to be done without understanding where the pushback is elsewhere, we need to go back and see what our capacities are, both reserves, bonding, all of the sources, and then put all the projects up there, the capital, and then list them. Because something's going to drop off the table and we all need to be on consensus on that. So I welcome that process. And then lastly, Rick, I, your remark about Kita and the, the Small Business Center, we could argue the merits of them, but I'm happy to do that. But I think it's a false equivalency to say the B N O because we, Kita, we've been a partner with the county and the other cities for forty years. S B C T about ten years. The B N O tax has been less, about ten months and we still don't fully understand the revenue versus who's paying for it and what the impacts are. So the idea that we dropped thirty thousand suddenly off B N O, therefore we should have Kita and S B C T pick up the you know, until we stuck our necks out at some cost and implemented B N O, Kita and S B C T C were still obligations we entered into. So I'm happy to look at them and we may not want to continue them, but I want to do it on their own merits and I'm concerned about false equivalency.
Hold on, Gary's next.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Um, Britt, I would just clarify that I was asking for a discussion of the boardwalk, not a decision at this time, okay? I, I did, I did not want to assume that we're just going to do it without having a conversation. And to Mr. Stern's point, you know, how, how long, for instance, you know, we need to weigh these priorities. And I'm hoping the retreat will provide us an opportunity to do that. I look at how long, for instance, the Front Street redevelopment has been on our capital plan. How many years has that been sitting on there? We, and we don't do it because we don't have, we say we don't have the money. So I just, you know, I just think we need to make sure that we're weighing the right priorities as well. And then, uh, yeah, there you go. And then um, Deb, I, I, when I look at, you know, for instance, about four hundred thousand dollars in new personnel requests, okay? I, I hear sometimes Debbie's voice in, in my head saying, council, we can't continue to dip in reserves to balance this budget. Okay, I hear those words sometimes, not in my sleep necessarily, but but um, our, and, and of course, the personnel costs, as we all know, they, they continue, they're ongoing costs. Um, are, um, are we, are we pulling in any money from reserves at this point that we need or that in order to um, show positive cash flow, I guess is my question. Um, and are you comfortable that we're going to be able to uh, cut back on that policy if we approve this budget?
My comfort level is we do have money in reserves to cover it right now. We have more than our financial management policy, but thank you for recognizing that. Because this is just not a one-time cost being covered by reserves and there's been quite a bit of discussion. I guess my comfort level would fall is through attrition, we need to revisit every position it becomes available going into the future because it might be that some of these positions we're filling might be vacated through attrition later. Um, I would just like to take the assumption off of just because you have the position now may not need that you need it in the future. And I think um, we've been, we're pretty, we still are, we're not as conservative as we used to be, but we're still pretty conservative. And so I, I feel comfortable if, if we have the process in place to continue to visit the budget and the expenditures and also the knowledge that through attrition, maybe something might not need to be funded in the future. And as we know, is, is sometimes, hopefully, some of the level of development um might taper off a little bit. But right now, everybody is a little bit on overload with the workloads that we have. So that would my comfort level. We definitely can cover it in twenty-six and we are just a few months out of starting the twenty-seven budget. Sorry. Job security for me, right? All right, before we, next round of questions. Are we comfortable with the direction this is headed? Generally?
Yeah.
Generally? Okay.
He, yeah, I, I guess just from a process standpoint, um, from my peers, are, do we want to go line by line and say yes, no, or do we need time to think about this so that we come back into the business meeting or something next week so that we go yes, no, and then vote?
You, you, you read my mind. I'm, I'm.
Okay, sorry.
And that's true. I mean, seriously, I, there's a lot of detail in this, but our, our, the, the big question that I have is it sounds to me that by and large, you're comfortable with the direction of this. I would ask you to read all of this stuff very carefully and then bring back what changes you want for a final adoption next week. Is that, is that okay? Well, we have um, final approval set for the budget on December fourth. And so we bring forward everything. And the ordinance, the ordinance actually is approved on the nineteenth. I will not be here next week, so unfortunately. Um, but we will, we will continue if, if these requests um, are what the recommendation is to continue to move forward. I can develop the spreadsheets and we can give you the bottom line numbers of what they will look like. Okay, so Mr. Accurate, then Mr. Noel.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, other than a couple, uh, really one more question and just a couple of comments, I'm, I'm really don't even need to go line by line. I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with what's been done. Um, so, I mean, I can do those other questions, but if we're going to, as far as that part, I mean, yeah, I'm pretty good right now.
Okay, Doug, go ahead.
Yeah, two things then. Um, maybe building on what Rick said is that you go ahead and populate the council column, column similar to what the mayor's recommendation and we work by exception on next time and just go back through there and validate, yep, yep, yep. Um, the other piece, and this gets back to uh Gary, your comment. Um, you know, I've had some challenges at times truly understanding what's happening with our budget. Um, especially when we've had some of the big uh wide sprint swings when it's like, how do we make good decisions? Um, I guess I'm comfortable with the cash flow on this one. Um, I wasn't three weeks ago. Um, I pulled apart the September budget status report. I have a, I've got my own internal projections ongoing in my mind. It'll get firm. Um, I'm, I'm more comfortable with this than I have been since I've joined the team, which I'm not saying I'm, I'm, I'm not there yet completely, Mayor. I'm just saying, I, I think because of the latitudes on some of these bigger pieces, if we hit, to hit the brakes next year, we probably are okay. The year after that, I think we're going to run out of personnel dollars. Would be my estimate. So.
All right.
My two cents.
So if we can put this populate the council columns with the way it is, but with the idea that it's going to come back and, you know, it's fish or cut bait time, guys. It's, you know, we, we need to have a really, you know, yay or nay on this um, next time around. Okay, Rick, go ahead.
Yeah, so the only things I would say before that, um, just, uh, yeah, Gary, like you were saying with, you know, as far as reserves, the one thing that I, that makes me feel comfortable is, you know, the wage and benefits that we're, we're where we were adding back almost three hundred and seventy thousand where, you know, of savings essentially from, from our estimates. And our new expenditures in that same area are three hundred ninety-seven. So we're almost even there. So now granted, we can't always expect savings. Congress is going to go as it goes, but I, I, I feel that, that alone makes me feel a little comfortable just there. So um, and then um, So, um, and then, um, so Ed, as far as the, the other, um, I'm not saying it's an equivalency. What I'm saying is if we're going to discuss cutting a revenue stream by any amount. Then the reasonable responsible thing to do is to cut expenses. And so if we're going to talk about cutting, cutting our revenue stream by approximately 30 some thousand dollars. This is $15,000 in expenses that we can cut. Now, I could have come back and said, I want to propose that we, that we now postpone the council salary increases that we voted for, which also amount to 30 some thousand dollars. So I didn't go that route, I went with these because these are expenses we don't have to pay for. I support these two line items, you know, I do. I was right there with you last time defending them and they both go directly into something I want, which is the creative district. So I'm just saying the responsible thing to do is if we're going to drop by 30, or then we need to reduce our own our legislative expenses by 30, so.
Okay.
Um, the last thing I was going to say is Gary, did we want to talk, I know this is when you were particularly behind and it didn't make it to the final one. Do we want to talk about the information officer position? Which was something the council had talked about and it has not, it did not make it onto the recommendations. So do we want to talk about that tonight before next week and on to the three column?
Well, I, I had a whole bunch of hands up here. I think, I think it was Ed and then Britt and then, then Gary, sorry.
So we're, we're engaging in a near dialogue, which is good, right? That was the whole idea of getting away from off the dais and an informal study group workshop format. So frankly, on the BNO tax, we originally estimated seven to 800,000 dollars. We're, we're about 1.2 million. I would argue to you, to you, Rick, that it's a windfall. One of the reasons we upped it last week to take care of small business was recognizing that. And as far as I'm concerned, I'd rather take it to 250 and really support small business in this town and grow our base rather than tax our base, but we can save that argument for another day. In any event, we're not cutting and have lost revenue, we're dealing in fact with a windfall.
Okay, so we have Britt and then we have Gary.
I mean, I was essentially going to say something similar, but it, it, the BNO is evolved, it's ever evolving. I mean, we're still establishing what it is that we're bringing in for revenue and I think we're streamlining the process. It, you know, as, as staff has given their feedback and recommendations. And, um, I think I, I don't necessarily agree with an increase to the KITA dues, but I, I, I do agree that we shouldn't stop funding the small business center with, kind of without warning. I think it's a relatively small amount, but could potentially go far for the people who are benefiting from it.
Good, Gary?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, to Rick's comment about the public information officer, yes, the, I still think we need that. I think most people think we need that, it is on the waitlist. Um, so, um, I, I guess, um, uh, I, I see the needs here for the code enforcement officer and, uh, some of the additional support in the police department and engineering, et cetera. So, uh, I am not going to, um, die on the hill, I'm not going to put gloves on for the public information officer this year. But I would, I, I just really think it's sort of like why we needed the city administrator position. We have grown from a small town into a small to mid-sized city. Uh, and responsible cities, um, future looking cities have a communications officer, a public information officer, whatever you want to title it. Um, that is responsible for helping us communicate with our citizens. Um, providing basic factual information to our, our voters and residents. And, um, uh, most cities our size have somebody in that, somebody in that capacity. And I would also say, um, I know for a fact that our city administrator and other department heads end up spending a good deal of time on writing communications and other work that would typically be done by a, a public information officer. So I'm not really sure how much money we're saving by not having one, just can put that out there. Okay, thank you. Thank you for asking.
All right, Britt, and.
It's a long, it's, it's, it's on the public information officer and I guess I'm going to put this really bluntly, but I feel like. Well, okay, so you didn't recommend it, is that because you're going to fill in the gaps? As the city administrator?
AI works really well.
On some level, like, we all kind of rise to the occasion to, to make sure that we are can hopefully communicating effectively with the community. So, yeah, I think that's.
It wasn't like a child, like I think in many, I, I want to like just make sure it's not misconstrued that I don't think we should be taking advantage of the fact that he's a professional and probably will. And as are our other staff who rise to the occasion, like, I, I've been really begging for this position for a long time. Like it, it is what growing.
So I mean, part of the rationale really was code enforcement or PIO.
And, and see, and I have to, I have to say, the code enforcement has really gotten to the point where it is so critical. So critical that it, it, if people ask me, what, what keeps you up at night? This is one of them that keeps me up at night. It's like not having a cop. And, um, in fact, it's exactly what it is, is the PIO. The, um, code enforcement is effectively enforcing all of those civil things that we really need to have enforced that we aren't right now, so. Okay, can I, can I truncate this conversation? You guys have looked at this, you've seen it. Think about it and then we'll bring it back as presented next meeting. And then we'll get thumbs up, thumbs down.
It, it'll have to go to the first week in December.
First week in December.
Cause I'm not, I'm not here next week, but I do need clarification. Um, we have right now in the budget, KITA $10,000. And what they were asking for is a 5,000 increase and the SBDC we do not have in the budget. I don't know if we've even heard from them this year with the, with the funds that we've given them, the city clerk can answer best to that. Is it in or is it out? I'm not sure where, which direction I had, sorry.
Or.
Well, cause, cause we heard that before, could you, since it was in the budget this year, have they asked for any money? Have we spent any money out of it?
We have received, um, requests for invoices, I think for two quarters. We haven't received communication for continuation. And for further clarification, I would really want to know if this is continuing or if we have to come back each year and talk about it. So it's kind of been a little bit unclear in the last two budget cycles.
So why don't we do this, let's get more information from both the SBDC and KITA and have it available in December's meeting.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, I think we've got marching orders.
Thank you, that was a lot of work, I appreciate the, the community effort.
Thank you all to the team.
Well done, guys. Okay, that, that brings us down to questions and concerns of the council, future agenda items for the city council. Anything, Rick, go ahead.
I may have a very short fused request for another set of banners. I got an indication back that we may hear from Saquamish, but it's not going to be, it's going to be fairly last minute if we want to try to do something for Point Elliott, like Treaty Day this, this time around. So I know we've been asking, I've been asking for their endorsement before I put it before the council for well over a year. Um, it sounds like we're going to get it, but it's going to be last minute to do it this year, so just heads up.
When is Treaty Day?
Treaty Day is not till January 22nd, but if we did it two weeks prior to, um, and then, you know, we, it, it would be a very short. I would basically come to the council, ask to amend the agenda and vote that night, so just as a warning.
And that's, that's right up to the holidays too.
I know, it's, it's, well, that was the reason for that timeframe is that's what, uh, Mr. Chairman Forsman suggested would be the most impactful to the Saquamish is if we honored them around Treaty Day. So that, that's what we've been shooting for. Um, I've asked that, I wasn't going to propose it to the council formally until they endorsed it. They're closer to that now than they were before, but it sounds like it would be very last minute, so just giving you a heads up, I may be ringing that.
Can you remind me, do we have a proposed design for the?
No, that's part of why this would be, yes, so this could, this may not happen this year. We, but I'm, I'm talking to, uh, Leonard as much as like, yeah. So, um, just, uh, wanted to throw it out there that may come, may come to a very last minute and not be doable this year, but, um, I'm going to try if I can.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick.
All right, uh, any other questions and concerns of the council? Doug, Tabor, go ahead.
Um, tomorrow I'll be sending out a, um, an update on my agenda item for next week so that you guys can formulate your questions and it's going to include an FAQ, so that, that should help as well. And the whole thing is only going to be three pages, so it's pretty short reading and pretty interesting. So I hope you guys look forward to getting that in your inbox tomorrow.
What is the agenda?
It's.
I have a question of what is the?
But, but what is the agenda item you're referring to, Doug?
Yeah, I, I requested to put an agenda item, it's a, um, it's called a Bevins remedy. It's basically, to sum it up really short, um, individual citizens are allowed to sue s- city, county, state agents for violating their constitutional rights. But none of us are allowed, are able, there's no course of action to sue a federal agent for violating our constitutional right. Um, so this is a letter to our state legislature to remedy that.
Oh, okay, interesting. Thank you, Doug. I'll look forward to reading it a little more carefully. Okay, um, any other question, concerns of the council? Hey, seeing none, continued public comment, any public comment? Anybody? Okay, seeing none, mayor and council comments, anything left?
So Pam had asked me if I would do a recap of the conference I went through on housing. Um, but I was waiting for Pam to be here, but that's okay, um, so I'll hold it till next time just to give you guys, everyone, just sort of what I learned there, so.
Okay, if there is no other, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment or unless you have a comment, Britt.
I move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, is there?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, good night, guys. Here we go.